All right, good evening, everybody. I'm checking my phone. I hope you all will too. Make sure your phones are disabled or whatever we do to our phones. Uh, welcome, everybody. We will start with the roll call. Suzanne?
Thank you. Mayor Levy?
Here.
Mayor Protem Carr?
Here.
Councilmember Case?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Present.
Councilmember LeBar?
Here.
Councilmember Sonnier?
Here.
And Councilmember Sawyer?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. If you all join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law. Okay, we have no ceremonies, presentations, or appointments, and no additions, deletions, or corrections, so Suzanne, if you're ready, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening, on tonight's consent calendar, we have one item, and that's the approval of the minutes from the July 18th city council meeting.
Counsel, any questions? If not, we'll just entertain a motion to approve the minutes and the consent calendar.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Suzanne?
Thank you. Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeBar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Katie.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we are on agenda item number six. I've got two folks here that are signed up to speak on 9C and 9D. I can let you do that at this point, or if you would like, Valerie and Jeff, if you want to wait until the public hearings come before us, that would probably be the right place to do it. Is that okay? Is there anybody else here tonight that would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda? Okay. If that's the case, we'll move forward. We have no unfinished businesses and no ordinances on initial posting, so we'll move on to our public hearings and start with Laura Pellegrino. Thanks, Laura.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. So, the first item I'm on tonight, item 9A, is the request by Jeff Esterline, Shining Mountain Golf Course. Jeff is the applicant, and Greg Brown is the property owner. It's to allow disc golf frissons special event up to 11 o'clock, so past 9 o'clock PM, on two days, August 16th and 17th, at the golf course, which is actually not on -- one of the disc golf courses is right there by the golf course, and then there are two other disc golf courses which are in the northwest quadrant of the holdings by Shining Mountain Enterprises. This is all in the planned unit development zone. So, this is the -- all of the Shining Mountain Enterprises holdings. You can see here to the left of Highway 67. Some of the golf -- disc golf courses are here concurrent with the actual golf courses, and then other disc golf courses, there's three in total on this site, are in other areas owned by Shining Mountain Enterprises. The event itself will be in conjunction with a disc gol -- disc, um...
Frisbee golf?
Yes. Thank you. Frisbee golf event, which will be happening on both those days, and after the athletes finish with the frisbee golf, they will be going to this area here, which is the northwest corner of much of the holdings. The stage will be in this little area down here, parking and the porta-potties will be up in this area here. And this is accessed off of Lucky Lady Drive, off of Highway 67, coming in here and going up this road to this area here. So, staff did a complete review of this application, and we do recommend that the city council approve the disc golf frissons special event on August 16th and 17th on the Shining Mountain property after 9:00 PM on the site shown within the Shining Mountain Disc Golf Course grounds, subject to nine conditions. These nine conditions were with the staff report that was submitted with the packet that was distributed to the city council. So, I'm going to summarize these nine conditions. First of all, that music and lights on both days be turned off at least by 11 o'clock; that the event coordinator shall be responsive to complaints received, if any; that the event coordinator distribute a telephone number and brochure to surrounding residences and to the Woodland Park Police Department, Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District, and to the Planning Department. And the brochure should notify the property owners of the event and provide a call number for complaints. If one complaint is received by the Woodland Park Police Department after 9 o'clock, then the event coordinator must turn off application, amplification, and reduce the volume on the sound system. If a second complaint is received by the police department after the volume has been reduced, then the event coordinator shall be required to immediately cease all sound, including generators emanating from this event on either day. Condition number five, all lighting for the special event is to be downcast and fully shielded. All generators shall be turned off no later than 11:00 PM. The temporary parking field and the surrounding area for the temporary stage shall be mowed to no more than four inches in height prior to parking any vehicles or assembling the stage platform. The event coordinator shall prepare and submit to the Planning Department a fire mitigation plan, which plan may include a fully loaded water truck on-site, multiple fire extinguishers throughout the site, and perhaps designated smoking areas. And finally, condition number nine, the event coordinator shall at all times be subject to the municipal code, section 941, which deals with noise, except as herein waived. So, those are the recommended conditions of approval. I don't see Jeff in the audience, nor do I see other members of the golf course, so staff would turn it over to city council and public hearing.
Thanks, Laura. Um, I got a question for you. I know that area a little bit. What's the closest house to where they're at?
Uh, the closest house, and I can't scroll down, but it would be to the south, and then the -- there are houses, there's one or two houses and private properties up in this area.
Noel, you're up late at night, aren't you?
Oh, I'm listening.
You're not too far, I know that.
Masters Drive goes down and right at the bottom of Masters Drive, that'd be the closest house. And then there's a few up Lucky Lady.
Yep.
But the trees would block the sound easily.
Right here are the three on Lucky Lady, just off of Lucky Lady.
And they've had this event, um, before.
They had it last year.
The reason it's coming is because it's two days, and it's nine to -- it's till 11 instead of 9, is that correct?
It's after 9:00 PM. Any event that occurs after 9:00 PM must be authorized by city council.
Great. Counsel, any other questions for Laura? Noel?
More of a comment. I love it. It's our Woodstock, guys. It's Woodland Park, Woodstock.
Woodstock 50 just got turned down.
Yeah. And, you know, a side note on frisbee golf. I love frisbee golf. When I was 12 years old, I actually won a tournament in Ohio for frisbee golf, so it shows you how much I'm into this, and I've played quite often, and I've played, but I should get into this tournament and see if I can win it.
Anyone with anything a little more relevant?
Well, Miles is not here, and I just wondered how embarrassing it would be for the police department to get one complaint and then go close them down.
Indeed, two. Indeed, the second complaint, right?
We did run these conditions by the police department and by the fire department as well. Actually, it was worded the way it was because Miles had requested two strikes.
Two strikes.
Yeah.
And we spoke to Miles beforehand. He had to go home tonight because of just family issues, but he indicated he didn't have any concerns, so...
Counsel, anything else? Any applicants not here? Laura, you have anything else for us?
No.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. Counsel, we will entertain a motion. I'm sorry, we have anybody that would like to speak other than those that have...
No.
Noel, you want to call again? No? Anyone from the audience? Okay, counsel, we have no one from the public. The public hearing's closed. Val?
Motion to approve the golf course special event.
Second. And second, Suzanne?
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeBar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, Laura, looks like you're in charge tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This is item 9B. It's a request by Kim Packham, who is the applicant, and the Yoot Pass Saddle Club, who is the property owner, for onsite camping from August 12th to 19th for the Woodland Park Rock Gem and Jewelry Show special event to occur at 19250 East Highway 24 in the Service Commercial Zone District. This is the 10th Annual Rock Gem and Jewelry Show at the Saddle Club site. Saddle Club site is indicated in the heavy yellow line. Here's Highway 24, and it's the northern end of the Saddle Club site. They've had the event in this location before. As I said, this is the 10th year, and it is a permit for camping, so this is not the TUP, and that's why we're before you tonight, because camping in non-designated campsites requires city council authorization. So, the staff recommendation is to approve camping at this site with nine conditions, and I'll just really quickly run through all nine conditions. Camping shall occur between 9:00 AM, August 12th through 9:00 PM on August 19th. Camping is for event volunteers and vendors only, with no more than 45 camping units onsite. Camping units may include tents, camper trailers, RVs, and pickup campers. Camping units shall not be connected to city water or sewer and shall be fully self-contained. On- and off-site trash, garbage, debris shall be cleaned up during and upon cessation of camping. On-site cleanup shall be coordinated with and enforced by the property owner and the event coordinator. The event coordinator shall be responsive to complaints received, if any. All lighting within the camping area, if any, shall be downcast, fully shielded, and turned off by 9:00 PM each night. All generators shall be turned off by 9:00 PM, and the event coordinator and all campers shall at all times be subject to the noise ordinance. No concert till 11 o'clock for the Rock Gem and Jewelry Show.
Well, and for me, I mean, they've been across the street for 10 years, and we've never had an issue, is that correct?
We have had a s -- wouldn't even be a complaint, it would be a comment by adjacent property owners across the highway about parking issues, but it wasn't really a complaint, it was just an observation that when this gets busy, people park across the highway on Trawl Road.
Counsel comment.
It's a great show.
It's a great show. It brings a lot of people to town, and I think it's beneficial for everybody. Um, is Kim here?
No, Kim was not going to be present tonight.
Okay, if nothing else from counsel, we'll open public comment in this regard. If you'd like to speak, I'd like to ask you to come to the podium. That's great. Just come to the podium, give us your name and address, and we will do our best to answer your question. Sorry, this is just so everybody at home gets a chance to see you on TV.
Um, yeah, Valerie Lundey at, I'm at 1450 Eagle Trace Court here in Woodland Park. It's just a question, it said, you know, that the city water and sewer weren't going to be used, and had to be self-contained. Clearly, a tent can't be self-contained, so do they have porta-potties there and water sourced for their people? It's just a question.
Great question. Laura will answer that for you.
Yes, there will be porta-potties, and all of the tent units and camper units will be self-contained, and they'll have their own water.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Anybody else will close the public comment? Counsel? Anything else? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Paul?
I'll second.
We got a second. Suzanne?
Harvey?
Yes.
LeBar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, Laura, if you want to move us forward, ordinance number 1349.
Yes, Mayor Levy, it's actually ordinance 1349 and 1350, and we're going to begin with the applicant tonight, who will present his proposal, and then I will do an analysis with the municipal code and move from there. So, I'd like to introduce the applicant, Rick Mallett.
Okay. Larry Larson's going to take the lead.
So, that's not Rick Mallett.
Good evening. My name is Larry Larson. I live at 1320 Michael Lane, and I've been helping the applicants and Rick, Travis, and Hope through this process, advising them on all this mumble jumble vocabulary about getting through the land use process. I have worked as a public and private planner for over 40 years, seven of those here with the city of Woodland Park. I met Rick and Ann back in 1987 when I first moved to town. They sought out my services and asked if I could help them with this particular project, and I said I'd be very willing to do so. And, uh, this is a project, I think, that we hope that you can support tonight. Uh, it's certainly going to be a benefit for the applicant, the neighborhood, and the community. As I said, I advised them throughout the process on, uh, on, uh, on the particulars of a zone change and a conditional use permit. I assisted them, they did the work, I just did the guidance. So, tonight, we're going to break this up into a couple phases in part of our presentation. I'm going to introduce Rick to come up here to talk about the project itself, talk about the property, how they came across acquiring that property, their need, the history of the property, and the vision and the concept they have for their business to serve on this property. We're going to talk a little bit about their company, the Rampart Investment Group, and how that group fits very well with this particular parcel and this particular use. We'll talk about a request for a zone change and a conditional use permit. We'll talk about what the project is all going to be all about, that description. It's important to keep in mind, as we go through this presentation, that this project will be developed in two phases. I'll also talk about the surrounding uses of this particular site. You should note that this particular use is in a transition zone between commercial and residential, so that naturally brings out the neighbors that are concerned. We did conduct a neighborhood meeting on April 29th, in which we invited the neighborhood to come talk to us. We told them about our project, we listened to their concerns, and we tried to address as many of those concerns as we could through the application and the process.
Larry, I'm sorry, would you just do me a favor, speak into the mic a little more?
Certainly.
Chris, if you've got to turn that up a little bit, just so...
Thank you.
Okay.
Project broken.
Is that better?
That is better. Thank you very much.
I'll try to focus my bifocals on the, my notes in the screen and talking to the microphone. So, again, we're going to talk about both their concerns. We're going to talk about the benefits that this particular project has for the applicant, the neighborhood, and the community. We're also going to talk about the planning commission's recommendation and the Planning Department's recommendation. So, without, and we're going to talk about some of those impacts that we heard and how we plan to mitigate those. So, I'm going to introduce Rick and Ann to come up here and talk to you about the Bowman Avenue Contractor Services and Storage Park.
If you guys would just start and give us your name and address, please, for the record.
I'm Ann Mallett, 118 Bridlewood Lane, Woodland Park.
Uh, Rick Mallett, 118 Bridlewood Lane also. Basically, we're here to, uh, to kind of give an idea of what we're about and what we've been in the community for years. Along with my son and his wife, Hope, this is Travis and Hope, and my wife, we are Rampart Investment Group. I've been here since 1963. My dad used to have a custom cabinet shop. If you go down to Safeway, that White House right by Safeway, that's where I grew up as a child. I can remember going to the rodeo grounds back then. My dad used to actually work on the stagecoaches that they ran down Paradise Ranch, used to go up and down what we used to call the Old Road. So, I've seen some changes, along with everybody else, and what I can really remember back in those days when we were contractors, our friends were contractors, family were contractors, if you had a wood business, a firewood business, you just put your firewood beside your house, and that was your firewood business. If you were a plumber, or a painter, or whatever you did, that's kind of what you did. So, obviously, things have changed. When I sold my house, I used to live up on Rampart Range Road, and when I sold my house on Rampart Range Road, I thought, well, what am I going to do now, because I need a place to take my business? I need to take a place where my kids, that are going to raise their families here also, will have someplace to go as contractors. And so, as we started to look around, and we went all the way from Cristola all the way to Divide, all the way out north on 67, to try and see what properties were available for a contracting business. If you had something, uh, you were a painter, say you had a septic systems installing business, you had any of those items, maybe the new food truck guys run around town, where are those people going to go with their businesses that are not going to make your neighbors unhappy because you just parked those next to your house? So, as I was looking around, looking for future sites, we kept driving by the old C-Dot building, and we thought to ourselves, with the C-Dot building, this would make sense, they're similar use, we drive by, it's kind of flat, it has a flat lot, security fencing, and a central location. They improved the property enough for traffic to come and go off the highway that we knew that our vehicles wouldn't hurt anything. But the main thing with this project was really someplace for the contractors to store their equipment and to go to. So, we're looking at this more as warehousing for us, warehousing for some retail businesses, someplace that has a little larger space than a typical small storage unit where you got 10 by 10. So, on my search, we saw this property here, and we came in and talked to the city, and I went through with Sally, and we talked about different zoning options and what was zoned for our needs, and, um, we really came down to very little that the city could offer us to help us as contractors to have a spot. We looked at some properties to the north that were vacant land. The vacant land, it just seemed like it was going to be too big of a project for us, but then once we saw the C-Dot property and thought, boy, this would be perfect, it's got three huge buildings already existing there, um, we could maybe warehouse them as soon as possible. That's why Larry was talking about phasing the project, where we could go in there now and do small improvements, clean up the place, start to paint, and then in the meantime, we could go through our, all of our engineering studies and all the bigger ticket items that we'll have to do down the road, uh, which was kind of a catch-22 for us, because without, obviously, without having our zoning change, we didn't want to commit too much just yet, but we felt good about the properties that we're working with. So, really, we felt like, we felt like this was a big need for the community. The storage units that we are talking about, future building, will be larger units, to be more 300 square foot size, typically a 14-foot sized door, because some of the people that we've dealt with that are interested in this, we had a septic tank pumper, he needed someplace to pull his tank in in the wintertime and have heat to it. We talked to, uh, the local lumberyard, for example, uh, they were looking for some warehousing space. They need some temporary warehousing space where they get overloaded with doors and stuff coming in. We talked with the general contractors that have a need, because, uh, they've got stuff that they may have with blankets and heaters and ladders and that type of stuff they need to be put inside. I had a guy with a tree removal business, he needs someplace to park a pickup truck because he lives in a small complex, an apartment building, and they told him he couldn't park his truck there. Concrete business guy, we had a guy that had forms, didn't know where to park his truck. And so, that all being said, and I want to keep going on and on, we just felt like it was a great place for we contractors to go, and for those that have a small business, because as you know, some of the new subdivisions are pretty small, small lots, have a lot of HOA restrictions, some people can't even park a car outside the garages. And so, we're trying to have a controlled environment that we'll have there. People have a place to go that'll be fenced, be safe, be screened, uh, and that's, I think, in a nutshell, that's probably, probably about it. I could linger here forever, so... So, I think that's about all I have to say about the project right now.
Well, thanks very much. We'll get back to you with questions, Rick and Ann.
Have I failed to speak into the mic? My microphone, just do me one of these, and I'll try to stand up straight. Okay. Thanks, Laura. Tonight, we're here to ask you for your approval tonight for a change of zoning from the suburban residential district to a community commercial, CC. Along with the zone change, we're asking for a conditional use, which will allow for the inside storage of contractor supplies and equipment with limited screened outside storage. This would include the two uses of contractor and construction services, as well as warehousing. This site is located at the northeast corner of Bowman and Caroline, seen in the dash area on the screen before you. To the east is the campground, which is also zoned community commercial. To the north, Zone PUD, is a single-family development. To the northwest is the apartment complex, zoned multifamily residential. To the west, Zone Suburban Residential, single-family development. To the south is Zone, is single-family residential, as well as to the southeast, which is Zone Community Commercial, which is the self-storage units. Again, our basic project is to provide for needed contractor storages as goods and services. Materials will be stored both inside and outside, and if it's outside, it'll be within a screened outside storage area. The project will be developed in two phases. The first phase will, as you see the property as it is, there will be major cleanup, uh, screening for the outside storage areas will occur, painting, removal of the old storage tanks that are on the site, and planted landscape areas. The second phase will, will be commenced and asked for city approval once an additional building is decided upon by the applicant. That, that particular, um, building and the use is not completely decided upon at this time, but it will be used for some sort of storage. You, at that time, we will come back with a revised detailed plans, we'll show the details, architectural design, the, uh, include the studies for drainage, and so on and so forth. I'm going to kind of walk you through the site. Right now, the existing primary access into the site is off Bowman Avenue. This is the primary existing access. Here are the existing buildings, 1, 2, and 3, which will be used for inside storage. Here are the existing tanks. These are C-Dot tanks that were used for magnesium chloride applications for the roads during the winter. Those will be removed and perhaps be replaced by an existing building. The dash lines you see here will be designated areas for parking of vehicles, and the outside storage area will be limited to the area bounded by Building 3, 1, and the property line here. So, this area will be, will be screened with a six-foot privacy fence. There's an existing screening privacy fence along the eastern boundary with the campground and the northern property line facing the Calico Development, Single Family Development. The future development of this particular site will be here with the future storage building. We anticipate that there will be a proposed detention pond that will be needed to serve this particular site and to take care of the drainage. Still part of Phase 1, excuse me, I kind of skipped over this, is an enhanced landscaping area with a single sign, a non-lit, uh, um, freestanding sign that will just identify the site as being the... being the Bowman Storage Area. And this area down here will be maintained and preserved as a open space. There's a lot of good, mature trees, pine, aspen in this area, that area will be maintained. Again, the future Phase 2 will be the introduction of a new storage building. It's anticipated that that building will be used for further contractor storage inside. The large arrows that you see on the site represent the general traffic flow within the site. Again, if you come into the primary access, you can access back to the, access to the buildings, to the outside storage area, and then again to the proposed future building on the north side of the building. Please note that this proposed building is a future secondary access off Coraline. That will be situated in such a way that these arrows represent an area that do not provide lighting of vehicles as they come into the site and to the neighboring properties. To the north, this building will screen the lighting of the vehicles, as well as to the west. This particular access point here is situated between the single-family neighborhood in this direction and the apartments to the northwest. Again, no direct light, vehicles coming out of the site will be shown into neighbors' Here, I'll run you through a series of photographs of the site. This is the primary access off of Bowman Avenue. Again, this is building number 1, 2, 3, and then the future building would be situated there. Go right way. Again, close-up of beautiful building 1, 2, and 3. Building 3 is an unusual building, it's three-sided, it was used by C-Dot for sand storage, that's why you see that extra layer of embankment along the walls, it was just for reinforcement of that building. Here are the copies, a photograph of the storage tanks, which will be removed. Again, this is the future storage site on the northern part of the site, where that future building will be located and be reviewed during Phase 2. This is an example of what that building could look like if this building is used for construction storage. It could be used for the construction materials, vehicles, equipment, and so on and so forth inside of those buildings. Again, just a quick tour around the site. We, like I said, we have single-family dwellings located to the south and to the west and to the north. We have the apartment building to the northwest of the site, and the adjacent campground, which is to the east of the site, which again is Zone Community Commercial. We believe this is a traditional use, transitional use, excuse me. By that transitional use, we're meaning a use that's situated between existing commercial and the residential neighborhood. We feel that this is a good use for this particular site, it's a continuation of the previous use, or even a better use than the use that was maintained by C-Dot. We also think that this is the last gap in this particular area to be developed. This neighborhood and area won't see any more development unless things are torn down. So, this is the last gap that will occur in this area. It will provide for our predictable land use future for this neighborhood, as well as this business owned by the group will be locally owned and managed. So, they will be responsible for mitigating any impacts to the neighborhood, and it also can serve as a gateway into the neighborhood. And I showed you the photographs earlier, and that's what we intend to do. Benefits of the site, as Rick mentioned before, this identifies a specific market need that they have identified and they hope to fill. This will move the property from the C-Dot public use to a private use and be additional property tax on the tax rolls. This will be a redevelopment of blighted property. As you can see in the slides, and if you had a chance to drive by, it's in very good shape now, but there will be an opportunity to make it look a lot better. And again, the intensity of this use will be less than what it was with the previous use. We will to enhance the architectural design of the future buildings, the existing buildings, and the improved aesthetics. This is a family-oriented business that's vested in the community, they have been for many, many years, and they wish to be a good business person here in the park, as well as being a good neighbor to the area residents. And they have expressed through the neighborhood meetings and through the process we've gone through, to be able to mitigate the impacts and issues they feel that their particular project may have on the area, including the screening of outside storage, the design, designated vehicle parking, traffic generation and flow. We did a traffic memorandum provided by a traffic engineer. This use will only generate 55 trips a day, that is extremely low. So, traffic going, being generated with this project is very minimal. They've also addressed, addressing hours of operation, lighting, again, will meet city standards, one signage. Eventually, to take care of drainage problem that's occurring on the property that will be addressed, and certainly to mitigate any noises that may occur. Again, the advantage is the protection of this preservation area on the south side. This, plus the enhanced landscape area, is over 15% of the site. Again, this is the southwest corner of the property, and there is ample opportunity to make this, like I mentioned earlier, a gateway into the neighborhood. We believe we meet the review criteria for a zone change, it's consistent with the city comprehensive, it will be consistent with the city comprehensive plan. We know that there is a mending comp plan revision program for 2020. We have asked Sally and Laura to address that during that process, to change that designation from residential to commercial. We know it's consistent with the comprehensive plan goals and objectives, specifically enhance the city's identity, provide for economic diversity and vitality, maintain city utilities and services, which I'll talk about in a second, provide for economic development opportunity, and enhance the community character and design for the area. Has the area been changed for the zoning quest? We believe yes. It used to be a C-Dot property, now it's been bought by a potential business existing in Willam Park that would like to use a use that's similar to that use. Is the use appropriate for this location? Yes. There is adjacent to community commercial, already adjacent to the site, and is consistent with the historical use of the site by C-Dot. And again, does the city have adequate water or wastewater to serve the site? Yes. In 1970, C-Dot applied for a city water tap and a wastewater permit. There is no need to increase the amount of water or wastewater to be generated from this site. We're asking the city council to review and approve the conditional use permit. I'm briefly going to go through that because I know Laura, her presentation will address this very extensively, but we believe there is a need for this particular use at this location, again, the redevelopment. It will not endanger the public health, the welfare, it will not endanger the value of vicinity property. In fact, by redeveloping the site and enhancing it, it probably will increase the value of the properties in the area. This property is indeed in harmony with the surrounding area. Again, we talked about the transitional use. Does it conform with the city comprehensive plan? Yes. Does this project comply with the city standards of regulation? Certainly. This project will meet all those requirements. Will it accommodate the onsite and offsite traffic generated? With only 55 trips, Bowman being improved by C-Dot when they were there, by restricting or limiting the amount of trucks and traffic that goes back into the neighborhood, yes, we can address those traffic issues. There is no natural hazards identified on this site, all man-made hazards associated with the C-Dot project, the magnesium chloride, the underground fuel storage tanks, they have all been removed, environmental site assessment has been completed, and no further mitigation is needed. This site will be designed, constructed, and operated that will not increase the danger to fire, explosion, or safety. And this, we have agreed to adhere to the recommended design and amenities to improve the site through landscaping and to aesthetic improvements. We endorse, appreciate the planning department's help and support throughout this process to get us to where we are tonight. We have listened very carefully to the recommendations concerned of both Laura and Sally on this particular project. Those suggestions have been taken, and we've incorporated them into our plan. We also appreciate the planning commission's recommendation for approval of both the applications. We did have a rule of best public hearing at that meeting concerned about issues, and we think we have now addressed those. And we concur with all recommended conditions suggested by staff. Don't want to hear that again. So, again, tonight, we appreciate your understanding, the city council respectfully requests your approval tonight to approve the application for the zone change and the conditional permit. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
You know, Larry, I think we'll wait until we get a staff report, and then we'll come back to you.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much. I don't know if Laura's got anything to add to that.
I love it when the applicant is a planner. It does make my job easier. But I do have my own PowerPoint presentation, and I will go through it, trying to avoid If I can get it open. All right, this is an application to rezone, and once it is rezoned, or approved to be rezoned to community commercial, then it is also an application for a conditional use permit to allow contractor services and warehousing. So, as you can see, the site is in the central west area of the city, just off of Highway 67. It is adjacent to Bowman and Coraline in this northeastern quadrant of that intersection. As the applicant stated, there is a campground immediately to the east, high-density residential in a PUD zone immediately to the north, high-density apartments to the northwest, single-family residential everywhere else, and Highway 67, and Evergreen Heights, and the northeast Teller County Fire Protection District offices right here, and the fire station. These images are very similar to what Larry showed you. This is the entrance to the site that C-Dot used. As a matter of fact, here is the sign that indicated that it was C-Dot property. And it exists today very much like what you see, the applicant is proposing to continue using this entrance as their main entrance for their warehousing and contractor services. Here is a corner of the Bristol Cone RV campground, this is to the east, and this is the site we're looking at. You can see that there is some existing fencing. You can also see that Bowman is not improved, there's no sidewalks or curb and gutter at this point. And then here is looking down Coraline, again, you can see the ditch as an improvement, you can see some screenings, some fencing along the western edge of their property, and you can see no sidewalks or improvements on Coraline either. This is at the intersection of Coraline and Bowman, looking into the site and giving you an idea of some of the surrounding area. And this is at the same intersection, looking north down Coraline, and you can see a single-family residence next door. So, this is the current zoning map. The site that we are looking at is indicated right here with the word "site." It is currently zoned suburban residential. The applicant is requesting that it be rezoned to the pink, which is community commercial, which is similar to what you see here on the Bristol Cone site. Because it is immediately adjacent, it is a good candidate for rezoning to community commercial. And as stated in the staff report, under the suburban residential zone district, only two residential dwelling units would be built, or could be built, on this site as it's currently zoned. This is the official, the comprehensive plan, the City of Willam Park's 2010 comprehensive plan, which will be reviewed beginning next year. The site is shown as single-family residential. Staff believes it was shown as single-family residential just to reflect the zoning that was in place at the time the 2010 comprehensive plan was reviewed. Staff does not disagree with the applicant. A reconsideration of the best and most effective land use for this could be either commercial or mixed use. And mixed use would allow for residential, high-density development, much like the apartments you see to the west. So, the site as submitted by the applicant, and he went through it in quite a bit of detail, a lot of the existing buildings are to remain, the outside storage is fairly well screened by these existing buildings. Future phases includes a storage building to the north, which will again be for warehousing and contractor services. So, staff did a complete review and analysis of both applications for rezoning and conditional use permit. With the rezoning application, we asked six questions. Is it consistent with the comprehensive plan map to change it from suburban residential to community commercial? It is not consistent with the comprehensive plan map. As I showed you, the comp plan map shows it as residential. Again, staff does not believe that rezoning to community commercial would be a detriment to this property. It is adjacent to other community commercial uses and zone districts, and this is a site that has already been impacted. This use has occurred more intensive in the past, and this new use coming in will be less intensive. Also, keep in mind that if we rezone it from suburban residential to community commercial, community commercial allows for a mixed use. It allows for three-plus attached dwelling units on this site. So, if in some time in the future, there was ever another development after this development, they could put apartment buildings in there, they could put townhomes in there, it could be a mixed use for higher-density residential. Currently, the applicant is proposing contractor services and warehousing. But right now, with the suburban residential, two dwelling units, that's a very inefficient, ineffective, and wasteful use for this acreage and for infill development for a fully serviced site. Question number two, is it consistent with the comp plan goals and objectives? Yes. Staff does believe it complies with numerous plans and objectives, namely, it encourages economic development and existing businesses, and it provides a need for contractor services to locate within the city. What has changed from the past? Not much has changed. It was used by C-Dot in much the same way, it's being proposed to be used by the current application. Staff does not believe the impacts will increase or change, and as a matter of fact, staff believes the impacts are going to be mitigated and therefore reduced with this new proposed development. Is the location appropriate for a community commercial zone? Yes, it's immediately adjacent on the east side to another community commercial zone district, and it is a logical extension of that zone. Is there sufficient water for this site, and would the density as proposed be sufficient? And answers to both of those are yes. The density for the proposed use is going to be the warehousing and contractor services. Water is sufficient, they have a water permit, and taps have been allocated to this site, and there is sufficient wastewater and stormwater services to this site. So, staff does find substantial compliance for rezoning from suburban residential to community commercial. So, we also did a complete analysis of a conditional use permit. If it does get approved for rezoning, the warehousing and the contractor outside storage services would require a conditional use permit, and the applicant is applying for that right now. So, what do we look at when we look at conditional use permits? We look at the need for this type of use and whether or not it's been mitigated, and I believe that the applicant has described the need, and staff does not- And I believe that the applicant has described the need and staff does not disagree with the need for contractor services and warehousing within the city. Will there be any impact to public health and welfare? Staff believes none. No impact that hasn't been mitigated. The traffic on Bowman has, the road has been upgraded to address the weight of these trucks coming in and out of this site. And no other improvements to either Bowman or Coraline are needed at this point. Will there be any impact to property value? No. With the mitigation that the applicant is proposing, staff believes that there may be a reduction in or an increase in property values because they intend to increase the value of the site itself with landscaping, with painting, and with some architectural enhancements. Will the site harmonize with the, will the proposed use harmonize with the adjacent land uses? Yes, particularly with the commercial to the east. And it'll be a transition zone, as the applicant stated, between the high-density residential, the low-density residential, and the commercial zones all around it. Is it in compliance with the city plans and city regulations? Staff does believe that it does comply substantially, substantively with the city plans and with the city zoning regulations. Is there an impact to traffic? There is a reduced amount of traffic based on the proposed use. And again, as I said, the road has been upgraded. Is there an impact to the environment, soils, slopes, streams, and hazards? No, staff does not believe that there will be an impact. When they come in to build the Phase Two, the new storage building, they will do a full soil analysis and a full drainage analysis. And right now, nothing has changed in terms of the impervious areas. Will there be any impact to utilities? No. The existing utilities are onsite and available and can anticipate the capacity that these applicants are proposing. Will there be any impact to public danger? Staff does not believe that they will be storing any explosive materials or any of those types of equipment or materials onsite. There is no public danger that we can anticipate. And are there going to be any impacts to aesthetics? Well, the applicant is proposing to upgrade the buildings, to paint, to add landscaping, to further screen, and to mitigate. So staff does find substantial compliance with the conditional use permit standards and requirements and does recommend approval with condition of the conditional use permit. In conclusion, staff does recommend that city council move to approve ordinance 1349 Series 2019 based on the findings contained in the staff report and as presented at public hearings. An ordinance rezoning 2.238 acres that are part of the northwest one quarter of the northwest one quarter of Section 24 Township 12 South, Range 69 West of Sixth Principal Meridian, with an address of 930 West Bowman Avenue from suburban residential to community commercial. And that city council move to approve ordinance 350 Series 2019 based on the findings contained in the staff report and as presented at public hearings. An ordinance granting a conditional use permit for Section 1809090G contractors and construction services and Section 1809090V wholesale trade distribution warehousing and storage use in the community commercial CC Zone District at 930 West Bowman Avenue. These are the conditional use permit conditions that are a part of the ordinance. And I'm just briefly going to touch on the nine of them. So condition number one, prior to October 31st, that the applicant improve the site. And that means painting certain buildings, which they've already begun, cleaning the site, which they've already done, and beginning with landscaping and screening for outside storage. Condition number two, that the hours of operation be dawn to dusk seven days a week. That lighting be downcast, shielded, warm, and with a maximum no higher than 25 feet high. That there is no storage of explosives onsite. That there's no odor, smoke, vibration, glare, or particulates emanating from this site or from this use. That this CUP is not a noise relief permit and that they will still be subject to our noise ordinance. That 15% of the lot remain as open space. That they preserve as many existing trees as possible. And that prior to building, that they receive approval for a final site plan. That they plat the property and that they get all of the necessary zoning development permits and building permits. That completes my staff report. Mayor?
Great, thank you very much. Council will start with us. Who would like to start? Question the applicant or staff?
Do we have anybody signed up?
We do, but we're going to get to that when the time comes.
I'd actually like to hear what they have to say first.
Okay, let's see who else would like to speak. Carol?
I actually read the environmental site. I think I deserve to ask a question. Tomorrow, I'm going to start War and Peace. It's about 200 pages. This is, it could be a question for Larry or the mallets. On the 29th of the community meeting, what issues were brought up and what were the recommendations or how are you going to mitigate some of those issues that came up?
You asked about the neighborhood meeting?
Yeah.
Within the neighborhood meeting, I think some of the, the issues come up were, of course, noise, vibration, lighting, traffic. One of the things that we actually were considering, we have a proposed new building to the north. The original plan was to have a drive-around building, trying to put as many units with two-sided building to start with. With the concern we had on the north end, we said, you know, let's just go ahead, lower the density, add the one larger building that's one-sided facing to the south. And we hoped that would help mitigate any issues to those residential properties to the north, would help screen noise, help screen light, and anything else. So we, we're still looking into some of that to try and to work with the neighbors. So at least we're working with them and have some concerns. We're very willing to, to lower densities and stuff just to make it a good neighbor. Like we said, we're going to, we're going to be there ourselves too. Along with that, we know by not going at 2:00 in the morning like the CDOT did, that we have a little more control over what we're going to do. We're going to try and, we can do small things like aim our trucks in one direction if we know we're going to be up early in the morning to start them up. Obviously, there's going to be an occasional snow that comes out there at 2:00 in the morning. We may have to go in with, we plow snow with a plow truck. Typically, we have advanced time where we don't have to really go in there in the middle of the night. So that was some of the concerns. We talked about traffic. The big traffic for us, it's not so much large traffic. It's, it's going to be, like typically, we talked about traffic counts. And when they talk about 55, 55 vehicle trips, that's actually a vehicle coming and going is two. Typically, a house, for example, a home would have 10. So it's not like we're impacting a lot of traffic. In the warehousing industry, there's a lot of people that don't, don't come there daily. They may only come occasionally. So those were some of the things that we dealt with, with some concerns. Lighting was one. Well, we know that we're going to have to comply with the city standards for lighting. We don't see a lot of use for lighting because we're not going to operate at night. We're not going to try and be in there during the night. We're a different option than a typical storage unit would be. So that's how we're trying to control it.
A couple of the questions. This will not include the ability for vehicle maintenance or repairs, correct?
It won't be as a retail site. Now, obviously, if we have a repair on some of our own equipment, it'll be something we will do on our own stuff. We're not talking about having a body shop or a commercial shop or retail service equipment.
And I've got just a couple more questions along that line. Hazardous materials. How will you ensure that, aside from explosives, that there would be no other hazardous materials stored in the facilities?
You know, we met with the fire department and their biggest concern was fuel storage inside the buildings.
Bingo.
So what we're going to have, we don't have a lot of storage. We don't store gasoline tanks or anything like that. The stuff we would have would be for small tools, jumping jacks, that type of stuff. Well, how we handle that is we just mitigate that with fire, fire storage cabinets. We have very little, very little gasoline storage.
Then from the ESA, believe it or not, I wrote down a couple of things to ask you or staff. The ESA, for everyone's information, found that there were no issues with the site at all after DOT moved out. But there were a couple of things that caught my attention. They mentioned two vent pipes that could indicate some underground tanks that never got removed, maybe back from the 60s or 70s. Have you all done any exploration on that?
We did. And to answer your question there, we, we actually worked with Park State Bank on this project. They, that was risen to the occasion too. They wanted us to go back in and verify to them what was there. So the vent tanks, what happened was when they took the tanks out, we had some pipes that were running alongside the building. They went down into the ground and they were dead-ended. So we had to go back in there and actually physically dig up to verify that. We also had to go back in and verify that we really were tied in the city sewer. We didn't have any leach fields out there that was contaminating the soil. So we were required to go back and actually physically open up the ground and show them what was connected and what wasn't connected.
Well, and then my final question kind of relates to that and maybe Kip can answer this. And it would not be your responsibility at this time. I think it would have been something left over from the CDOT days is there were water wells within a quarter-mile radius and also within a half-mile radius? Any impact on those at all from the previous CDOT use or the proposed use that we're talking about tonight?
The closest wells I'm aware of are further down by Meadowwood. Everyone else around there is connected to the city, the city system.
Okay. No, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Carol. Noel?
All right, since you forced my hand.
You can wait till after we get public comment. That's all?
No, I'll just, I'll just, I got a bunch of things here, thoughts and comments and concerns and recommendations. So I used to live four houses down on Coraline there, so, for 10 years. So I'm well aware of the noise CDOT had at 3:00 AM on certain mornings. So noise was a consideration there and that was answered with the CUP, so I'm glad to hear that. And obviously, there's going to be mornings a little earlier than, when the sun comes up to get the, get the trucks out and get them to the construction site. The other concern was the height of the second building. I kind of looked at it and I measured it about 25 feet high. Is that about right? For the second storage unit, for the new one that you're going to build there, Phase Two?
You know, we're, we're still in the, in the process of determining our architectural design. But however, whatever we would do, we would stay well within the ordinance, the height ordinance.
I would just be concerned because of the houses right there and I believe it's Calico Court. Is that, that they would be looking at this huge building right there at their backyard and?
You know, they will be looking, the elevation, just the elevation of that lot, we're already about six to eight feet higher than those existing buildings.
Right, because it's slanted pretty good.
So even if we put a, say we put a 20-foot building in there, we're still going to be 30 feet higher than the existing home. So I don't believe that the height, the height requirement is really going to change how they will see out their window.
Okay.
I mean, whether it's going to be 15 feet or 30 feet.
Any talk of planting trees between that building and?
Well, there's been a lot of talk about planting trees with the city staff.
Okay.
So yes, we would, we would try and plant trees. Some of the stuff, you know, we talked about the phasing project. And we know that we're going to go back in there and replace fencing.
Right.
And we know that there's going to be landscaping along the sides and on each side of the project, which obviously we can't do until we do some improvements. We know we're going to have drainage issues to the north. That's probably going to require a retaining wall. And all the, that's why we're going to be going into the detention area.
Right.
So there will be some landscape take place, but it won't be done probably in the first phase, other than the stuff that we know we're not going to disturb within a year or so.
So fencing, are you going to replace the current fence with maybe more of a privacy fence?
We're going to replace the fence with something that looks a lot better. To answer your question.
It's been there for 30 years.
It's horrible. It's absolutely horrible. I mean, we agree, when we first looked at that site, you could tell, when CDOT was starting to leave that building to build their new building and divide.
Right.
We talked to the people that were working there. They said they could absolutely not spend any money on that site because they knew they were leaving.
Right.
When we purchased the site, it was an as-is for us. It wasn't like, well, we'll buy this if you want to go back and fix this, this, and this. It was kind of a catch-22 with us because we didn't have the zoning. So do we go ahead and start fixing stuff up and fixing stuff up without knowing the zoning? So our intention is to make the property look a lot better. I mean, we, we take pride in what we do as a business and we're going to take pride as we do in the property.
I'm well aware your work, it's pretty good. So, but what I'm getting at is a privacy fence, not a chain link fence, so.
You know, there was some talk, we had some talk about putting up a chain link that was, say, black.
Right.
We talked about putting up, you know, the more expensive fence, kind of like they'd have up at Tractor Supply, you know, or the hardware store, something similar to that. We're trying to get some curb appeal there. I mean, we, in our business, we want curb appeal.
Well, then that brings me to, I'll go a few more down. I didn't, is sidewalks, was that brought up in any of the conversations?
You were going to ask. We kind of know where we're headed.
Right, so sidewalks would be required if there was a residential development.
Right, okay. Well, then I'll scratch that one out. Let me go back up to my other notes here. The third entrance, I almost feel like that should be in the first phase because that's a second exit in case there's something that blocks the first, say a truck breaks down or right there in the first entrance and you can't get out. That requires the second entrance. I, I almost think that should be part of Phase One.
You know, we certainly will, we'll take a look at anything at this point because we felt like there might be more people opposed to second entrance than only having one. We would like a second entrance just for use, it'd be easier access for us.
Well, yeah, you have a light. You can go down to Evergreen or County now, or whatever we call it.
It's much easier, it's much easier. You know, we see a lot of, now even when we, what little traffic we have when we get out on the highway, you know, right there getting on the highway there, I don't know if you experienced that too, but between the people coming into the RV park, coming and going through there, there's a lot of traffic that comes, as we all know, that comes north on highways.
10 years. I lived there 10 years. I know.
So, yeah, we're not going to tell you anything about the traffic.
They like to do U-turns there and get stuck. Is there an existing office in there?
Right now, CDOT had an existing office in Building Number One.
Right.
We don't operate an office out of there right now. We operate our business office from our home. I don't anticipate right now that we all can have offices in here. We go into the second phase, we passed around the idea of having a combination retail, now retail office, but an office, someone that might need to have clients come and visit them, but they got storage within that office.
Right.
But you know, that's kind of, we, that's just a possibility.
Okay. Let's see, let me, some of this stuff's been answered already. Security or security cameras? What's your thoughts on that?
Our thoughts are we are going to be secured. We will have cameras on our site. We'll probably have, we will have some type of automatic gate system.
Okay, thank you.
Right now, to be honest with you, it's just a pain in the rear.
Yeah.
Open and closing the gate, trying to make sure the guy that was coming out closed the gate. We're not going to have a lot of items exposed out there because we're going to be behind a closed gate that's going to be screened. And the storage stuff we have will be separate from accessing the main part. However, typically, you know, we've got children in the neighborhood, we'd rather keep them from riding all over the property just for insurance purposes and liability. So we propose really to have a, it's going to be closed.
I, I think you'll be fine. I remember, you know, I'd start my runs in the morning right there and I'd look at those buildings, how the paint was just tearing off. And I always wished CDOT would have done something, but they never did.
I could hardly stand it myself. I said, you know, we've got to start painting something.
Yeah.
You know, it's horrible.
It's pretty bad. So I'm glad you're looking into it. I'm glad you're proposing this. I think this is a great opportunity to at least do something with the blight and.
Well, you know, we hope you didn't see the, the red primer I had on the one end of the building. I went.
I haven't been over there in 10 years because I lived there 10 years ago.
Went off to get some primer put on and it was red and I wanted to take some spray paint and say, this is only primer.
I saw it. It was covered.
Yeah, it was something. I knew I was going to have some phone calls.
That's all I have. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Noel. Paul?
Okay. I'd like to go into hazardous materials. Take a look at that. As a contractor, there are many materials that are used that are hazardous and do need containment, a hazmat program. Signage for a hazmat program for first responders should something happen. Have those discussions take place.
Yes, they are. We've.
We've, I think, we also had, I think staff met with the fires department with Tyler. We've met with Tyler on there to ask him exactly what he thinks we need to do. We talked about specific signage, they knew where we were and who we were. We talked about storing hazardous materials, we talked about all those plans, but-
Okay, okay. That's fine. Do you have a hazmat program in your company?
I do not.
Okay. Does the city require them to have a hazmat program? Do you know what a hazmat program is? I'm not trying to be confrontational, I'm just trying to get information. You use chemicals in the construction industry that can cause problems if it leaves the property either through drainage or if it's stored in an enclosed building, it vapors and you have a fire by parking trucks, and you could have diesels in the buildings, you can have gas in the buildings, you can have evaporations of rags not discarded correctly, self-combust, things of that nature. You have chemicals that are hazardous to people and animals. You should have some kind of containment. As you look at those tanks right there, the wall around it is not for decoration, that is actually a dam to contain the materials inside the perimeter so that it does not leave that perimeter. I'm assuming the floor of that is concrete, so it doesn't seep into the ground and get into the environment, the groundwater and things of that nature. So when I'm talking hazmat program, I'm talking about protecting the neighborhood, the people, the animals, the water system and everything else like that. You are involved with chemicals in the construction industry, and these chemicals can migrate into the land, into the water, can hurt people, into the air. They say there's no problem with particulates, but in the back, if you're going to have landscaping and you're going to store sand or whatever, stop mixing that up and whatever, there could be particulates. Do you have a way where you'll mist it so it don't dust up and stuff like that? Should you have such contractor on the property? Things of that nature. I don't, you know, there's a whole, there's a whole subject in the construction industry on hazardous materials and retaining hazardous material and the EPA and the fire department should be very, very interested in this property. And what's going to be inside those buildings and what's going to be stored on those properties, and are you going to identify those chemicals so a first responder will know how to respond with what particular agent that they're handling? Should they use foam? Should they use water? So there's things that come into question that people responding to an emergency on this property may not know what they're dealing with and could cause problems to the neighbors or to the first responders or even to your own people. So that's why I'm asking these questions.
Thank you, we'll take it in consideration.
So-
Go ahead, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Paul.
I'm asking the city to please, and the fire department, to look into hazardous materials being stored on the property. It's not like they're going to be storing dynamite and stuff like that, I'm not talking about that. I'm just talking about everyday chemicals they use.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sawyer, if I may just read conditions number four and five, and we can certainly add a hazmat plan needs to be prepared to those conditions if you, if this council desires. So condition number four says, "Uses shall not include any activity involving the use or storage of flammable or explosive materials unless protected by adequate firefighting and fire suppression equipment and by such safety devices as are normally used in handling any such materials." So that implies a plan right there.
But it doesn't tell them to identify the materials being stored.
Yes, we can certainly add-
Which we do not know if they're explosive or not, or if the vapors are toxic when they hit a certain temperature, even a chemical that's not explosive, if it gets out of a container or a drum that's being stored onto property and it's allowed to leave the property either through drainage into the storm system or just seep into the ground. It could cause a problem to groundwater, it could even cause a problem to our wastewater treatment plant in some cases.
I agree totally, and we can certainly add that a hazmat plan should be produced by the applicant to that condition for the flushes out.
I believe it's very important to protect the people, the environment, the oval, the best way to say it is the health and welfare of the community, period.
Agreed, and condition number five addresses that to a certain extent too. It states, "No smoke, odor, vibration, glare, or particulate emissions shall be permitted which can cause damage to health, animals, vegetation, or affect properties beyond the parcel boundaries." And that also implies that they have given some thought and consideration into containing these materials.
With all due respect, we're dealing with contractors. I was a contractor, I understand, I had to abide by hazardous programs and storage of materials, and believe it or not, the simplest things, even paint, can cause a problem. But some of the solvents that are used to complete their work as they need to use them, I understand that completely. I'm just looking at the health and welfare of the community.
Thank you.
And a hazmat program, even if you have not, and it does not sound like you have a hazmat program inside the city, it would be well thought of if you would consider taking your engineer, and even talking with Kip, I'm sure he has experience with it, and looking at hazardous materials being stored in the city for future, this contractor's going to want to work, and I don't blame him. And he's providing a service and economic development. What we need to do is provide a safe environment for him to work in and for the citizens to be safe. And that's what I'm asking. I'm asking for a hazmat program, and I'm asking for the fire department to seriously look into this. And I'm asking for you to get your engineer. Look at hazmat programs. If you don't have any, I'm glad we provide some for you.
Carol?
Paul, then would you suggest that as an additional condition for the CUP?
I certainly would. I know I could not work with the Army Corps of Engineers or DOD without one, and so I certainly would. And I'm not trying to be hot, I'm just trying to be practical.
Laura's given us an opportunity to add that as a condition.
Well, thank you.
Well, that brings in another, that brings back to my point of the second entrance, that if there are, which I assume, and that's a sad way to put it, but an insurance requirement would be if there was hazardous material, you'd have to carry heavier insurance or if there were hazardous material, so it'd probably be not recommended to do that, but the second entrance would be for the fire trucks, et cetera, escape routes. So council, I recommend that we add that to the CUP, that in the phase one, that they do the second entrance.
Anybody else?
Mayor Levy, I have one correction to make. I stated in response to councilmember Sawyer's question about sidewalks, I had it backwards. It is for residential that we do not require sidewalks, but for commercial development, and in this case, if there is an increase in value of 25% or more to improvements on the site, they would be required to put sidewalks, curb and gutter along Bowman and Coraline.
So if they put in the second building, wouldn't that increase it by 25%?
Yes, we believe that's what now-
So that will be a requirement at that time?
Yes, and there's also the option to submit fees in lieu of the sidewalks, curb and gutter, depending on-
It'd be nice to see a sidewalk there, though.
I thought I got an hour.
I know, I thought you did too.
I apologize for the error.
Yeah, could be. Council, anything else for applicant or staff? Okay, if not, we'll open the public hearing, and we'll start with Jeff Smith. Give us your name and address, Mr. Smith?
Counsel, councilman. Jeffrey Smith, 1380 Rampart Range Road, Woodland Park. After reading your planners' report, re-reading the report that the applicant has put in, they spent a lot of time thinking about stuff. I happen to be one of those general contractors, so I know kind of what's stored and what isn't. What I've heard tonight, what Rick is asking, the type of people he's looking for in there, I don't think you're going to have a problem with it. As far as I know, there's not a hazmat program anyplace in the city, so, you know, I've been here a long time, so, you know, if you want to start someplace, I guess you could start here, but I'm not sure that's quite fair. But I think they've done a really good job, and I think you guys ought to support it to get that place looking better. I've been here since '74, and really hasn't, it looked a little better the first few years, but it hasn't looked very good since then, so I think it'd be really nice to get it fixed. So, I don't know if you have questions on me or not, but-
Thank you, sir, thank you.
A responsible contractor would absolutely, and landowner, want to know what is on that property. And they say they are a responsible contractor, I believe them, and I'm not here to twist your horns. I'm only here as a representative of the people to ask the question. And as a previous contractor, I understand exactly what you guys are going through. If you want to look at it in a sensible way, this makes perfect sense because it would cost a great deal of money to straighten that property out, to put two homes on. So this project makes sense, but we also have to look at the community. We want to preserve the community that you served, grew up in, and was able to run around and have fun. I want to keep that environment protected, and not as an environmental wacko, but as a person who really cares about what's happening in Woodland Park, period.
Have anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on 9C? Okay, sir, if you'll come forward and give us your name and address.
My name's Richard Gish, I live at 432 Burdette Circle, so my property, my northern property boundary looks directly at theirs. I bought my property when CDOT was there, knowing full well CDOT was across the street from me. Since they've taken over, it's a whole lot quieter. If it's snowing, I can still sleep. My bedroom window faces their property, my decks face their property. I've only seen good come out of what they've done, so I really don't have a problem with what they've got going on, and, you know, they're fulfilling a need in the community, so, you know, I didn't want, last thing I want's an apartment building across the street from me. I'd much rather have these guys, so.
Thank you very much.
That's all I got.
Appreciate it. Anybody else on 9C? Okay, if not, we'll come back to council, and we've had a few suggestions. How would you like to move forward?
My suggestion was the second entrance added to the CUP in the first stage.
Laura, we didn't have that in there, give me, give me-
Can I give you some language?
I wish you would.
So I would add a condition 10 that says prior to, well, actually, we could add it as 1E, so prior to October 31st, that the second entrance be built. So be F.
It's going to be built anyway sometime.
Yeah, you know, obviously-
Sorry, Rick. Sorry, if you, I need you to come up here so people at home can hear you, you're more than welcome. I just, people at home have to hear you, so I need you to come to the microphone. Come on up, yeah.
It's good to get the applicant's response.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't want to make it uncomfortable, I just, they can't hear you from there, that's all.
You know, we were, we were really hoping that improvements like that could be into the phase two. We're not going to grow, you know, we're going to be pretty full here soon. I mean, we've already got a couple people that just want the one building. I'm not going to have any more, hardly any more growth until I go into phase two. We were really hoping to do that, we would hope to do that in phase two as opposed to having to do this by our October deadline. Along with that, obviously, we can do the work, we're contractors, but with that, I mean, there is some expense there, and then we had to make sure that when we go with our engineering, that we have a plan in place before we just start putting in a second entrance as far as width and what our intent is. I'd really like to have a little more time to work with our engineers and our design peoples before I just slapped one in, in the first phase.
I highly recommend, and October, maybe by October, that might, you might, you're right, that might be a little sooner, but it would be nice to see the second entrance before you start storing.
What's wrong with associating the second entrance with phase two?
Seems natural to me, Mr. Mayor.
Phase two's whenever.
Understand, but the point is, we don't need a second entrance, is what they're saying, until you have phase two because of the increase in traffic at that time. Prior to that time, it feels like one entrance is enough.
It's up to council.
Understand.
Recommending it. If council feels that it should be in phase two, then the council can do it. But I truly believe that it's, it needs to be there, it should have been there all along. CDOT had a way with these additions, obviously, so that's my recommendation, whether you take it or not.
Kelly?
Mr. Mayor, I support, I think that the contractor, the applicant, I think the staff, and I think the professionals that they've been working with in putting this project together have put this together in an affordable way, in a way that works for them. I don't think that, I think I support the application as it's been presented this evening without any changes imposed on this applicant.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else, council?
Well, my question, Mr. Mayor, is can we deal with each of these new conditions individually, or do we do them in aggregate?
Laura? Can you put the conditions up?
You want the conditions up, sorry, I was-
Please.
And these are brief, oops, I'm going the wrong way. These are briefly, the conditions. Mayor Levy, however you want to deal with it, if you want to have discussion on each of the conditions separately and then talk about the hazmat plan as part of conditions three or four, or the second access, and then have a motion with amended conditions, we could do that, or we could have a motion as presented and see if that passes?
Counsel, what do you think of that idea? Motion as presented, and if it doesn't pass, we'll make amendments to it? Or would you rather amend it in one or two ways prior to that time? Val?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm always the one that complains about fire egress in and out, so I'm likewise interested in this. My issue is blast a hole in the chain link fence for now until it improves a lot, that sort of solves that problem. The hazmat thing, I don't think we want to have this applicant subjected to a brand-new situation, but I think it's an excellent point made by councilmember Sonier, that this is definitely a consideration, we all, we all know about storage of these things. I don't know how to solve this from this seat. I guess I would look for planning to help us there, but I likewise have problems with both of these, but like councilmember Case, I'm not really interested in oppressively imposing on this applicant at this time. I'm always interested, as everybody knows, I've heard me lots of times about fire ins and outs, and I think that, and I'm talking out of my hat here, so I understand that. If we can have another exit, whether it's improved or not, my simple thing is blow a hole in the chain link fence and call it good. I know that's not really a planning term.
The fire department did review the site, were on-site with the applicant, did not require a second access at this time.
Kelly?
And on top of that, the fire department has also reviewed this whole application and the conditional needs. I think that the fire department has the authority on hazardous materials, on fire suppression, on access and all of those things from that perspective, Mr. Carr. I agree with what you say, and it's not that they're not planning a second entrance, it's just not, it's their project, they know what the operation looks like, and they don't need the second access at this time. And I think to plan it properly with the final plat and the second phase and how that's going to lay out seems more reasonable instead of incurring the cost of paying in a second entrance and then it doesn't work with where the second phase ends up being. And so that's why I say I think the fire department would have thrown up some red flags had we had issues with hazardous materials or any of those things or requiring that plan. And no disrespect to- And no disrespect to Councilmembers Sonier, but I, I rely on that and their professional opinions. So that's where I'm coming from, although I agree with you. We always want to look out for the health, safety, and welfare, and I think we do that by including these other agencies in our briefing process. So that's where I'm coming from. So I'm comfortable with the project, which we, I have to force the city to play their procedure.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would move to approve ordinance 1349, to rezonate from suburban residents to community and commercial.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Carol. Suzanne?
Thank you.
Labar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonier?
With all due respect, a hazmat program is not a complicated thing. I vote no, on that basis.
So we're voting on the rezoning right now?
This is on the rezoning?
Not the conditioning?
Not on the CUP.
Res zoning part, not the CUP.
I just need you to state your votes, sir, for the rezoning.
No.
Okay. Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-1.
Thank you.
And I'll make a motion now.
I'd like to make a comment first.
Please.
Um, it would, I wouldn't have brought up the second entrance if the fire depart, if you had mentioned the fire department had come in and looked at everything, and I think Paul wouldn't have mentioned it either if we would have known that information.
I didn't mention a second entry.
No, I did, but your hazmat program...
I take no offense at the vote here, or I take no personal offense. I think it's a good project. I'm not backtracking on anything. But you best look into hazmat in the future, and what the implications are to the community.
I believe it's a great project, and I'm glad you're doing a second entrance, and eventually, so thank you. All right, go ahead, Kelly.
Thank you. I'll move to approve ordinance 1350, series 2019, per conditional use permit.
As stated, yeah.
And the conditions presented by staff.
Second?
Second.
Hillary. Thank you, Suzanne.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonier?
I've drawn up my caution, no.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-1.
Thank you very much. Thanks, council. Larry, and Rick, and Ann, and Laura, thank you very much. Travis and Hope, everybody, best of luck to you guys, and you're going to make another difference in our community like you have for so many years, so it's much appreciated. Thank you. Okay, we move on to ordinance 1351, and Kip Wiley.
Thank you. Counsel in front of you tonight is ordinance 1351, the authorizing the purchase of water rights and 1.5 Twin Lakes and Colorado Canal Company shares. At the last council meeting, we approved the resolution for the contract, and this is the, the closing that, closing the process with accepting it in front of public hearing, and the real property of those 1.5 shares. So before you tonight are 1.5 Twin Lake shares, or Twin Lake and reservoir, Twin Lake Reservoir and Colorado Canal Company, excuse me, and we recommend approval. That's it. I can answer any questions.
Sheriff, council, do we have questions? I have one person signed up in public comment, which will go to if nobody has anything else up here. Okay, we'll open public comment, and Valerie Lundie. Good. We're glad to have you. Thank you for being here.
Do I have to say my name again?
Oh, did I mispronounce it?
No, but because I was up here...
Please do.
Okay, Valerie Lundie, 1450 Eagle Trace Court, Woodland Park. Okay, and it's for Mr. Wiley. Obviously, I didn't see the stuff earlier, if this is like the next step, finalization of this, is, what's the reason for the additional water?
To preserve our water supply.
No, I, okay, I'm not that dumb. I, I, I understand that. The question is if there's still available water taps in the city, et cetera, what causes the use that us to have to buy more right now?
Okay, so this water makes it legal for us to pump our local water?
No.
Because we have three sources, we have three sources of water.
I know what we use them for. What's the change that causes us to need more than we already have?
Because of the way these shares produce water, it's not a set given amount of water, and it varies year to year based off of precipitation, snowpack...
Yeah.
Diversion structures, and how those are, how that water is moved around. So what we've seen, 2012, even during the hamid, that those shares don't produce a lot of water, where I have to go looking for water, either lease water, lease space, purchase physical water. So purchasing more of these shares makes our supply more secure in those dry years.
Okay, so then the follow-up question to that, based on your answer, your response is, if the shares you have aren't giving you sufficient, why are you using the same source, same, same debt for this as, for the additionals? You already have shares from these same people from Twin Lakes, so you're going to get another 1.5 from them, but if Twin Lakes isn't giving you enough of what you need right now, what's the point?
Because that's the only way, that's the only water we have available to us that we can physically get to Woodland Park and use, and Twin Lakes is our bottleneck within our system, so in dry years, a lot of our water is way out east of Pueblo.
Okay.
And it evaporates very quickly. The Twin Lakes water doesn't. And when that water's gone, I can't move water around within the system.
Right.
And it limits what I can do, so this isn't just water, it's actually space as well. So these shares come with the physical water produced by the precipitation, snowpack, as well as the storage capacity of that water. So for example, let's say in a bad snow year, a share produces maybe 0.3 acre-feet of water.
Okay.
And I still have storage capacity for a lot more than that, so if I can move water to that location so we can get it, that also helps.
Okay, so what, I'm, I'm really not trying to be a pain here. What capacity are we at right now, then?
So I got a report yesterday. It's been a great snowpack year.
And a lot of rain.
The rain locally helps, you know, it's a double-edged sword. When we have water, no one needs it, and when we don't have it, everybody wants it. So this year, with the snowpack in the high country, we've actually filled all of our reservoirs and we're spilling.
Okay.
Right now, I'm actually overstored in certain reservoirs because they're not full, or other people have used their portion of water, so I'm actually over 100% in capacity right now.
Okay.
Because this year has been such a great year.
Right.
And in other years where it's not so well, where it's not so plentiful, capacity could drop down to one year in, in storage.
Oh, yeah, I, I get that. I'm just trying to understand how, why it's right now. So, seriously, I'm, I...
I think part of the question, or part of the answer is, there's a finite number of shares available.
Okay, and these are people that are willing to sell some right now.
Correct. When they become available, there's an opportunity for us to, to hedge our resources and have a better supply, more stable supply in the future, because these resources will not, won't, you can't print water like, like the federal government prints money, we can't print water.
Right.
There's a limited amount of source, and so whenever there's an opportunity to hedge our fund, as it is.
Okay, so we're going to buy, I mean, this is not intended to be sarcastic, we're going to buy them now. We're over capacity, so we're really not going to benefit from it right now, but we will in the future.
We still, we don't benefit this year, we could have benefited a couple of years ago in a drought.
Right.
The other thing is the value of these, of these shares will always go up, so if we get them now, we're, we're getting them.
That's, that's where I was going with that when I said I wasn't trying to be sarcastic. It was, no, it's not instantly that it is, but it could be next year or the year after that we would need it. Yes?
And you're, you're more than welcome, I can, I can run you through a lot of that detail. I apologize.
I'm an engineer, I can't help myself, so bear with me.
Perfect. Well, hey, one of the things I would, why, because you bring up great questions, and for the rest of the community, we have a annual Citizens Academy that actually goes and walks us through our water system, our water rights. It'd be, I would absolutely invite you to participate this year if you would like to kind of get more into detail and really ask a lot of hard questions of our, of our utilities department.
There's also positions on our Utilities Advisory Committee we're always looking to fill.
Open your mouth, see what happens, too. Okay. All right, well, thank you. Like I said, I really just need to understand, because I, I looked at the, the usage, I looked at the shares, I looked at the share that we already had, and it's like, okay, I don't get it, so, because of where we were.
So, and, and if you look at just our shares and reservoirs, Twin Lakes is where we have the fewest amount of shares, and that's what produces the most water for us.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Lundie. Okay, anybody else on item 9D? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, council. Just like to hear a motion to approve 1351.
Motion to approve ordinance 1351 appropriating purchase of certain water shares as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Second from Noel. Suzanne?
Sonier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, council. I do have one quick update, if it's all right, Mayor.
Please.
I have another lead on another one share that I'm working on currently, so there may be another one coming forward to council.
Similar price?
Sounds good.
I'm hoping so.
Similar price. Ms. Lundie, is that all right?
No, no, I don't have to make it out of the way. Anytime.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I'm not trying to be sarcastic either. We appreciate you being here. Okay, we move on to new business, and, Suze, I'll let you start with this. I'd like to have Carol give a little background at some point on charter review, since she's led that, and we'll go from there, but why don't you start for us?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Levy. As, as council will recall, last council meeting, I mentioned that we would be bringing a resolution forthright to you this evening regarding resurrecting the Charter Review Committee. Just for a little bit of history, and I'll let Carol fill in the blanks that I missed later on, in 2016, that election, we had charter questions on our election ballot. 2018, we did not. It is now going to be April 7th of 2020 is our next election, and we think it may be time to do some charter amendments. We've looked at different things, so we have a resolution here in front of you, and I'd like to go through some of the particulars in the resolution. As council can look at the resolution and see, in section 1, the staff is asking that the city council hereby activate the Charter Review Committee for the purpose of review of the city's home world charter. The section 2 states that three council members be named to the Charter Review Committee. So with the passage of this resolution this evening, I'd like to also see who would be willing and interested to serve on this committee. In the past, Councilwoman Harvey has chaired the committee, and we've had Councilmember Carr, Mayor Pro Tem Carr, participated on the committee as well. Section 3 talks about, from the public, we would look for four additional appointments. So once this resolution is passed, I would ask permission, that this would give me permission to start advertising for those citizens that are interested on serving on the committee. And so there'd be four citizens, three council, myself would serve as the secretary, the city attorney, and the city manager would all be part of this Charter Review Committee. The requirements to be on the Charter Review Committee are, you have to be 18 years of age, and you must be a resident of the city of Woodland Park for more than one year. The other things, it states different things, and what I want to explain to council is, we started looking at our 2020 election calendar, and if we are going to do any charter amendments, this is kind of the timeframe. If we could start the committee and maybe start working September 1, maybe have that as a goal date to begin, we would have September all the way through December. In December is when I would have to bring to council on initial posting any of the charter amendments that we would like to change for votes in January in order to get onto the ballot. So it gives us about four months if we start in September. We think four months is doable because we are looking at just housekeeping issues. We are looking at issues that last time when we had the election and we had charter amendments, we couldn't bring all of them to you. It would have made the voters crazy, all of them. So we had to pick at the time the ones that we felt were most pressing and most important to the city. So we have a whole bunch more, and we would prioritize them also. Maybe we can't bring them forth, all of them as well, but we'd like to bring a doable amount, and there's just different things. We have a few examples, this is only just a few of the examples of kinds of things we can bring forth. One of the recommendations from our insurance company, SIRSA, when they reviewed our charter, was to eliminate the personnel commission that we have. That is one of the recommendations that they have, because they believe that right now, the buck should stop with the city manager, and at that point, if, if a personnel issue continues, the people can go, the staff can go to the EOCC. So this is kind of a little bit of an outdated type of thing, our insurance company said. We need to start having some gender-neutral language in the charter. The clerk is still called a he, and he's, obviously not a he right now, but always referred to as a he, and so as a housekeeping issue, we would like to put more gender-neutral language. And we also had another recommendation that in section 15.6 of the charter, the liability section of the charter is inconsistent with Governmental Immunity Act, which we get to take advantage of as being a municipality. We have another section on inventory. We'd like to clean up a little bit on city inventory. And then we would like to have consistent terms throughout the charter. Sometimes in the charter, it talks about the appointed officers, and sometimes it just talks about officers. So we'd like to have consistent language. These are just minor housekeeping things, there are many other things on the list, and it would be up to the Charter Committee to decide which ones they'd like to bring forth to council. So that's my summary of what we're looking for, and I'm hoping we can get moving on this, and I'd love Councilwoman Harvey to add anything I missed.
No, you brought up the, the housekeeping issues that we, we chose not to put on the ballot in 2016, there were a couple of others. I think four months is sufficient time, especially if we're looking at next year's election, we have no more than four months. The ability to look at the charter page by page, section by section, is time-consuming. I would recommend anyone who wanted to participate in the review committee to begin reviewing the charter now, but I don't think four months is not, is, is accomplishable, so I'm, I'm not worried about that. Really, I don't have anything else to add. I know Mayor Pro Tem Carr participated last, the last go-round as a...
Citizen.
Citizen at large, but I would definitely want him to participate in this review, and I'll be glad to participate again.
Carol, I would love you to lead that again. If it gets passed, would you be willing to do that?
As a lady of leisure now, I think I have my...
Val?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur. One of the reasons I got interested in council was I served on the Charter Review Committee, and our chair was fabulous, which is Councilmember Harvey. She led that committee wonderfully, professionally, concisely, all the things I like to see, and I, I welcome her participation to chair that if she chooses, and I have a resounding admiration for her performance in that, in that committee, and I think she, she would be a very big asset for us to do that.
I appreciate those comments. I would also say this, that we have a finite number of members for the committee, or recommending a finite number of members. These committee meetings will be held in City Hall, wherever we can find a conference room, but they are open to the public, so we can take public participation as we did during the last review, so this is not a, a secret society and a secret handshake. We welcome all input, and if anyone's got some burning desire that they would like us to consider... would like us to consider in addition to those housekeeping issues that we were not able to address in 2016, it will come out.
Noel?
I, I'd like to throw myself in, into that.
Sounds good.
Throw my hat in there.
Let's get it approved first, then we'll throw everybody in, if we like. Any other questions before I take a motion to approve 845?
I'd only add this, that during the last review, we had, um, the support of our city attorney who, you know, because we had her on retainer, um, did kind of limit our ability to come up with an idea for a change in the charter and then allow her to go back to her office, work on it with her staff, and then come back here. With the, um, hiring of our, our city attorney, um, that will hopefully expedite the process this time around. Uh, but we also had the support, yeah, just add that to you.
I, I can tell you, I won't go back and consult with my staff. It's just me.
But we also had the assistance of, uh, Sursa. In a couple of our meetings, we did bring an attorney in from Sursa, and that was very helpful. So if we can do that again, or at least give them the heads up.
Yes.
Great, thanks.
Be a good resource. Anybody else? Okay, council, can I have a motion to approve resolution number 845?
Motion to approve resolution 845, charter review committee.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And the second from Kelly. Suzanne.
Sawyer.
Yes.
Carr.
Yes.
Case.
Yes.
Harvey.
I guess so.
Labar.
Yes.
Levy.
Yes.
Sonier.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, Suze. Thanks, Carol, Noel. Who else would like to jump in right now? Anybody? You can think about it. We've got plenty of time, and like Carol said, there'll be public meetings, so any of us can show up anytime and, and give, uh, input, and, and we hope everybody here, um, if they're inclined into looking into our city charter, uh, we'd love to have your input.
So, may I leave?
Well, we should.
Well, she said three.
Three council members. I'd like to, um, push a little bit and leave tonight, if possible, knowing who the three council members are. And so far, I have Harvey and Sawyer.
And Carr.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that way I'll only have to train one new one.
There you go.
Okay. So thank you very much.
Sure. We've got 30 days to get started, don't we?
Yes, I have to advertise and...
You have to advertise. Okay. Thank you, council. You may, if you come forward, please.
I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you a minute, 'cause we are behind time.
I promise, I promise it's easy. Sure. Just went out of my head. Give me two seconds. Will they just like that? Um, oh, you, you said the meetings would be public. How would they be announced?
We would follow our usual publication process. They'll be announced on the city website, the city Facebook page. We have a monthly meeting notice, so it's on the front door of City Hall, and in those, we would actually mention them here at council, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move on to 10B and, um, this question of the joint work session. I'm gonna s, I'm gonna leave this conversation just for a minute. I know it's under Darren, excuse me, sir, but, um, so everybody is aware and, and really knows the, the reality of, of ordinance 1348. This did not come forward from council, from Kelly, from anybody up here except for me, and it's something that the mayor is allowed to do, and I'm the one that brought this forward. There's some concern that, uh, it kind of interferes with our process relative to the disposition agreement with the DDA, and should the horse come before the cart, if you will. Um, Mayor Pro Tem Carr has weighed in on this, and I've spoken with Kelly about it, but my approach would be, and I hope I have, I hope I have your consensus and vote, is that we put 1348 on the back burner and we just table that at least until we have a disposition agreement with the DDA. Does that make sense to everybody? And if not, I'd like to know why not.
I can...
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I concur. Uh, I wrote an email last couple of weeks, uh, talking about addressing the, what's now called the Second Amendment. Uh, we're in an iterative phase back and forth. I, I suggested that, um, we, we finish that before we do anything else. I think this is pretty much what you're saying.
Exactly, exactly what I'm saying.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Carol?
Uh, just a, a question of procedure. Can we table it at this point? Or is that possible?
So I guess to, to back up a little bit, so this is a legislative function. City council can do with it what you will. Um, so the little legislative history, if you will, 1348 was, um, shot down in the first, first attempt, so it's not a live ordinance in that effect. Uh, it was sent to planning commission, I guess, as an idea of getting additional input, research, information, ideas, et cetera, and that's kind of where we're at in the process, is additional information. So it's not, we're not in, in between any first or second readings at this point. Um, for all intents and purposes, it's not an active ordinance, um, so it's just a matter of when council feels appropriate to bring back the subject, whether it, whether it'll be continued to be called 1348 or not, um, maybe for simplicity's sake perhaps, but at this point, council can do what you will with it.
Well, and it'll also give planning more time to continue to review it and get all the information to us. So I think, you know, it's a win-win as far as I'm concerned, but I'd like to hear if anybody's got any downside to that. If not, if I can have consensus, then we'll do that. We'll continue to work on the disposition agreement with the DDA. They're gonna get it back to us, um, in, in due time, and, um, and then we'll address this once we get that agreement done. Hillary?
I, I agree with you, and I appreciate putting it on the back burner, because my language is putting the heart, the horse. And I would just caution planning not to spend an inordinate amount of time on it. I believe that an email received from Jason Fay explained it quite early, and I appreciate the clear language that you put in that email, um, but I do think that the amendment needs to come first.
Thank you. Noel, were you gonna say something?
You mean, the disposition?
The disposition agreement amendment.
My understanding is the ordinance is dead, so we should not even call it ordinance. We shouldn't even call it anything. We should just call it, um, planning should be reviewing the, either the, um, the overlay district or the, the way the DDA does review.
It's just a, it's a matter of semantics, Noel. We're gonna get the disposition agreement done.
Correct.
Planning can do what they want with 1348. As Jason said, we can call it what we want, but we're still gonna try at some point to get all the information we can from planning when the time comes. How they manage that will be up to them, but in the meantime, it'll get us all focused, council and DDA, in getting our disposition agreement managed, which I think should be our first priority.
And I agree with that. I think that should be the main focus. I, I think this 1348, uh, died last council meeting, and for some reason, it was my fault. I kept it alive. I feel bad.
There's four people that kept it alive, so it's not your fault.
Well, um, I believe that disposition is the primary goal. Once that's taken care of, I believe the DDA will have better opportunity to, um, develop that land, and I truly think that, uh, 1348 is a red hair. It should never see the light of day. I'm sorry, Mayor, but that's how I felt about it.
Yeah, it's fine. Everyone, you got your own opinion, that's, that's great.
I just wanna make something clear. It is a dead ordinance, so planning can spend all the time they want on it, it may never come back, or if it does come back, it'll have a different face on it, and it can still be voted down, so...
Or voted.
Or approved. And so I just, you know, I, like I say, Jason, your wording was really well, well laid out. I don't know how much time we really want to put on staff to continue something that technically doesn't exist.
If I came out, if I didn't mind, I'd just chime in real quick. As you know, Jason did send a memo to, to city council, uh, to clear up, uh, the rumors in any one of the, in regards to 1348 and, and regards to its origins and, and intent. Um, I think you, there's, um, it does clear it up, and there was also comments, we also provided comments that were very relevant from the planning commission, um, the aggregate ones that we had, we had talked about. There was a meeting based on, uh, was scheduled for 8/8, um, uh, as you know, uh, I think that was the other, the other discussion is, um, I think what we're saying is we're gonna cancel that meeting as well. Is that, I just wanna get clarity on that, because that was really some of the intent of this discussion as well.
That one actually needs a motion in the vote.
Okay.
What does the 8/8 meeting?
I would just like to comment.
Please.
Um, there's a, just a, for consideration, um, I, we have, um, scheduled a meeting on 8/8, a joint work session. Um, we could thank the planning commission for, for making the time to be there at that meeting, but, um, as the discussion has led us to, um, they probably don't need to be there number one, uh, but it would be an opportunity, and correctly if I'm wrong, Jason or Darren, or, um, maybe the DDA and the council to, uh, maybe work on the disposition and development agreement and try and see if we can move forward with that. But maybe that word, that's premature. It's just a thought that crossed my mind.
The, the disposition and development agreement was given to, uh, to DDA and the DDA attorney on July 10th, and so we have not received it back, but we believe that there, there are some comments to come. We don't know yet at this time whether they'd be ready by 8/8, um, but it's a possibility. Uh, we're not... Yeah. But also to that point, that's, uh, planning commission's regular meeting, so I don't know that they'll be canceling, 'cause they're, they're gonna be meeting on potentially, presumably something else. I'm sure we've got other development, but, uh, as soon as we hear back from the DDA that they're ready to meet or discuss, and council has an opportunity, excuse me, to digest whatever those comments are, and then we can have that discussion.
I was just about, if that would be a convenient time. Um, it is quite near, obviously, it's a week away, but, um, and I wanna just say, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, for setting the record straight, that I did not participate in giving in any direction to staff on anything pertaining to the ordinance.
Carol?
The only concern I have now at this point is, what, what charter, what mandate did we give to the planning commission? What, is it simply to discuss the elimination of a design committee of two people, or did we give them more leeway, uh, something, or, or what are they gonna send back to us? Is it only a discussion of the verbiage that was in 1348, the original ordinance? Or are they going beyond that? And if they are, have we given them guidance?
So I was at, I was at the meeting, um, at the last meeting on, uh, July 11th, and so that's what the comments are, are in front of you. You have comments from every single, every single member of the planning commission in terms of some of their initial perspectives. They didn't really deliberate beyond that, um, but they did focus on the two provisions that were, that were in the ordinance, the first one being, um, the removal of the design review committee, the second being allowing ground, uh, residential on the ground floor and the design standards. And so that was, those are really two things, and you can see the comments that they made in terms of those resp, those, uh, those, uh, clauses within the, the ordinance. Oh, Jason, if you wanna add to that. Okay.
So what will occur now? Will the planning commission come back to us with a formal recommendation, or are we just gonna deal with the comments from the email we got today?
That's a great question.
Sally, let me help answer it. Once we get the disposition agreement complete, then we'll go back and revisit and, and make it known to planning exactly what we're after.
Thank you.
So just one thing at a time.
Having been on planning commission, I'm more likely to have a need for a clear objective.
Yeah. You like that approach then?
Yeah.
Okay.
The planning commission certainly would like clear directive as to what the council would like you, them to focus on. If it's the entire chapter, which is not that long, make recommendations, or is, it's focused on certain aspects of that chapter and the overlay.
Val?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, uh, I think I heard Suzanne needs a motion. I make a motion to, uh, defer the joint work session for, uh, until we have a disposition agreement amendments, uh, figured out.
Is that okay, Suzanne?
More professional language.
Good. And a second? So basically, what Val's saying is, we're going to, um, we're gonna face the disposition agreement and put off the August 8th meeting until further notice. And we've got a motion and a second? I'm sorry, did I get a second? We did. Suzanne?
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, we'll move on to reports. I've got a number of events. Most of you in this room have been here forever, and you know that this first week and Saturday, this first Saturday in August is probably one of our busiest, so, um, get prepared for some of the following. And what's not on my event list, which is kind of disappointing...
Mayor's Cup.
Yeah, the Mayor's Cup. No Mayor's Cup on here? Mayor's Cup, this coming, this coming Saturday, um, I think the mayor's running in the 50-yard dash this year.
Woo-hoo!
And so against a bunch of four and five and six-year-olds, uh, it's the 10th, a week from Saturday, excuse me, the 10th, a week from Saturday, and I'll be running in that, and we'll have, uh, a number of people running 5K, 10K, lots of kids, and it's just a great event, so a week from Saturday. This Saturday, we've got the following, the Mountain Arts Fest at Midland Pavilion. Somebody help me with the time there. Can somebody...
Yes.
Sally?
Uh, on Saturday, the Mountain Arts Festival is from 10 to 5. On Sunday, it's 10 to 4.
Okay, help me with the Critter Fest, as long as you're hot.
Oh, boy.
Critter Fest at the dinosaur resource center. And Vino and Oats.
Noon to 6.
Noon to 6, um, Memorial Park. There'll be a lot of people, there'll be a lot of wine glasses, a lot of drinking, a lot of fun. It's a great, it's a great event. Tomorrow, of course, Farmer's Market has every Friday from 8 to 1, also Memorial Park. Uh, Tuesday's a great event, and I know Paul and, and some of the others that are big supporters of our first responders will be there, um, from 5 to 8 at Memorial Park. We'll have a third or fourth national night out. I don't remember exactly, but, um, the, all the emergency responders are, are part of it, and the fire trucks will be there, and cops will be there, and their vehicles, and it's just a great event for the whole community, especially the kids, to help support those people that protect us every day of our lives. So August 7th, that's this coming Tuesday, from 5 to 8 at Memorial Park. Also on Sa, on Saturday, August 10th...
That's August 6, Mr. Mayor.
Is it? August 6th, my bad. Excuse me. August 6th. Struggling a little tonight. Saturday, August 10th, I hope that's the right date, the Big Band Woodland Music Series at the Midland Pavilion, and that's from 11 to 1 o'clock. And Wednesday, August 14th, another great event, especially for kids, from 10 to 12 at Meadowwood, is the Touch a Truck event, and you gotta go watch that just to see the kids walking around and getting to touch the trucks and, and sit on them, and it's just, uh, it's just pretty cool for youngsters in the committee, in the community. Um, that's all I have. Val?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I knew about several of those things, so I'm not gonna mention them again, but I would ask if there's a 50-yard walk for someone who can't run anymore. But anyway, just joking. Uh, thank you, that's, that's all I have.
Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just thought I would follow up. I'm sure you, most of you saw the Thank You ad in the Courier from Paul Williams and our partners that did the electronics recycling event last weekend, last Saturday. I'm happy to report that we recycled 11,788 pounds of electronics that were in our living.
Good.
So thanks, everybody. That's a huge success. We build it over any previous year, and this was our fourth.
We billed it over any previous year and this was our fourth.
That's like one old TV, isn't it?
You should've seen all the old TVs. I don't know where they're coming from, but just a little something. Focus on the Forest was our nonprofit sponsor. We don't, we don't charge them any, they help us and we highlight them for our event. And Sean showed up out in the forest with TVs in his truck that he went out in the forest and found and brought in and paid to recycle.
That's awesome.
That's pretty cool.
Good, thank you.
It was an awesome event. Thanks, everybody, for coming out.
Beth, Carol?
Thank everyone in the audience who attended the task force meeting, the deer management task force meeting this afternoon at 5. We have two subcommittees for the task force now that are looking at different approaches to addressing an issue of overpopulation of mule deer. Both of those subcommittees came together and let us know where they are in terms of input to an overall management plan that we'll present to the city council on the 5th of September. We'll have another, um, de Jesus meeting, I guess, is what I would, how I would describe it, on the 15th of August, right before the council meeting again. Again, those meetings are open to the public and if anyone would like to come and hear what our progress is, I invite you to attend the one on the 15th. If you have an interest in supporting either the education subcommittee meeting or subcommittee or the committee that's looking at options for a potential call, contact myself or the city manager and we'll hook you up with those two committee chairs. That's all I have.
Thanks. Carol, I gotta thank you. Just a tremendous job in organizing and getting people to work together and I caught most of the meeting today and it's a passionate subject, but people have kept their heads on straight. Lots of new information that I hadn't heard before, so congratulations to you and your task force.
Well, without being facetious, one of the, one of the concepts that came up tonight was a deer fest, similar to the elk fest in Estes Park, and I just had this epiphany, why don't we do one in Woodland Station? Just a thought.
Deer Fest. Hillary?
I don't have anything to say from here.
Oh, yeah. Everybody get out and shop, enjoy the weekend and the events coming up. Thank you for participating in tonight and keep it safe and we'll see you next time. Thank you, sir. Noel?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, council. Move on to city attorney report.
Nothing except to add that we have five newer residents to Woodland Park area now, officially.
That's the Meyer family.
The Meyer family.
Yay!
So we're gonna fill the schools with all of our kids and whatnot.
Welcome.
Okay, Darren?
So I'm gonna defer my report to Emily for annual budget schedule and hand this out to you and then I'm gonna have, while I'm doing that, I'll have Emily go over that and talk about, as you know, we've had three, three different members of the finance department transition in the last six months and let her kinda talk about where we're at with that transition, but a lot of the financial reports you'll have as we move closer to the goals and objectives that city council has asked about in the end of August, so let Emily chat about that while I hand out the report.
Yeah, so what Darren is handing out is the updated 2020 budget calendar and most notable for you all is the August 22nd and 29th, potentially, Goals and Objectives work session. And so as part of that, we will be, I will be supplying the quarterly financial reports at that time. We have, as Darren mentioned, some new staff, including myself, that are getting caught up, getting caught up with all of the bank statements and journal entries, so it's the goal for, for that, for those two meetings, in particular, the August 29th.
Emily, I've got a question. December 3rd, a lot of times we try to approve the budget in that meeting and December 3rd's not on here. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, right now, we just have the, what the statutory or what the state requirement is for, December 15th.
All right, thank you.
But if we wanna move that, we can make that change.
I mean, sometimes we've been able to accomplish it, most times we have, sometimes we haven't, so just a thought, but you made your point, this is-
And I'll just say, we're still on schedule. I'm actually ahead of last year's schedule when I came in a little bit late in the process, so I think we're still, if we meet this schedule, we'll have two goals and objectives. We've already jumped ahead a little bit in that, we've, we've done strategic planning that will help at least shape a little bit of that for us when we meet for the goals and objectives, but those are on the 22nd and 29th. And so if there's any conflicts, please let us know, if there's any significant conflicts from city council for these work sessions, because we obviously would like to see full participation. Anything else, Emily, that you wanna add?
Oh, thank you.
Anything else?
That is it. Anything else from staff that would, like that? Okay, that's it.
Counsel, anything else?
Well, just, I see now on the schedule that you do plan on presenting the strategic plan on the 15th at our next council meeting.
So that is the goal? Right now, I've got a, is Karen in here? She is right there. She knows that I've gotta respond to Cheryl tomorrow at 11 on some final changes to it. My hope is that we can get it to you on the 15th, 'cause then have the strategic plan approved on the 15th by city council and that will help guide the goals and objectives meetings.
Just so you know, I will not be here for that. Thank you, babe.
Don't you dare miss any other meetings.
Okay. I'll be in Austin, Texas. Spelton.
I bet you will. Counsel, anything else? Thank you all for attending tonight. This meeting's adjourned. It's 10:50, I should've stopped, huh?